He's texting.
Yeah. Welcome to the school committee meeting of January 10th, 2023. At this time, we take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank EDPM for always live streaming and recording our meetings. I'd also like to say that tonight is the kickoff for the 200th year bicentennial at the Grace Bible Church, and we're really sorry we couldn't be there. And they have monthly activities coming up, and we're looking forward to being able to attend some of those activities. Does anybody have anything else they would like to add? And we have, thank you. We have Lilia here. She's our student rep. Welcome.
Thank you. So I just have a report to do. I was able to get the report for the high school this week and, or for the past couple of weeks, and the elementary as well. So on the behalf of the student body, I think everyone in the community would like to thank Superintendent LaGo for the weather day before break.
Thank you. That makes me feel good.
Yeah. It's been a busy week back from break. Teachers are giving final tests, quizzes, projects, all that kind of thing. So the semester two will start on January 23rd, and the close of semester one is on the 20th, so next Friday. Semester two will be entailing some new electives, two new early college courses, and those include psychology and criminal justice, which I'm excited to take. It will also begin some of the senior perks for the senior class, so I'm sure they're very excited about that. Mr. Clements has started to meet with the senior class about graduation, some details and things, so they can get the information out as soon as possible. Last week, some recent graduates came to talk about the, some tips and tricks about college and real life as they've experienced recently. Some field trips that are coming up for music and science in the high school, which is some alternative learning opportunities, which will be exciting for them. And all of the winter sports are doing very well in their season so far, so we're in the middle of that. And then for the central school, they'll be participating in their Booster-Thon fun run this month, which will start on the 18th of this month. The students can receive pledges until the 27th. It will entail participating in the online character education program called Grandland Adventure, where they will learn about gratitude, stewardship, bravery, perseverance, and wonder. The school-wide goal is to raise $40,000 for field trips, enrichment opportunities, flexible seating, grade-level T-shirts, and teacher grants. It will be happening on the 26th and 27th, so we're hoping that it is a fun experience for the central schoolers. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to back down and cheer?
Yes. I am, thank you.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Nicely done. Next up, we have Superintendent's Corner.
So I'm going to move right to Dr. Williams. She's got a few things to discuss, and then, because we also had Jim Johnson here from Kyle Cares and the JED Foundation, which I'd like him to speak this evening. We have some great news to share, and he's here to share with us. But we wanted to get, we had the targeted district review. The principals have met with both Dr. Williams and myself. Dr. Williams conducted the visit with the group from DESI and oversaw the participants that came in and worked on the report. The report came out. Dr. Williams and I met, and then we've met with the principals. The principals are certainly willing to, they're going to discuss with you some of the points that they saw in there with Dr. Williams, but I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Williams. Also, I might want to bring that up at the end. Oh, yours?
The long-awaited results of our targeted district review, if you remember, was back in February of last year. It entailed sort of a three-pronged approach. We had documentation we needed to upload for them. They came and conducted interviews and focus groups, as well as observations in the classrooms. And the three areas they were looking at was curriculum instruction, assessment, and student support. So all of the documents, all of the interview questions, and what they looked for in classroom observations, all were around those three areas. So as Superintendent noted, we have the three building principals here tonight. It is a very lengthy report that will be uploaded for all of you to have the full report, and what we'll put out for the community, not only the full report, but the highlights. So if people want sort of the abridged version of what we took away from the review as to strengths and areas of continued growth. So as I call up the principals, they'll discuss from their buildings throughout the report some of the things that they noted that are either things that are being worked on now or plans they're making for future work at their buildings to improve in those three areas. So, Mrs. Byrne, do you want to start?
Sure.
Great.
Want me to come over here? Sure.
Red Rover, Red Rover.
I'll pile my stuff on your stuff. Good evening, nice to see everyone.
Evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, yes. So to start with the targeted district review, of those three areas, I'm going to share a couple of highlights, some really strengths that I saw really narrowing down. The way they broke down lower elementary, it's K to 3. So a lot of our markings I do share with Mr. Paquette for grade 3, so I'll focus on those. And embedded in all of those are definitely areas for us to improve. Some of the information isn't as catered to grade level specific, which would be really, you know, great and empowering for me to have. But overall, I think it's a good snapshot, and I think it's pretty realistic of what lower elementary instruction and classrooms look like and sound like right now. So for our curriculum strengths, some of the key takeaways for us from K to 3, we're really looking at how our teachers structured learning time. And we were very successful with routines and management of our instructional time. Students were engaged in learning activities throughout the instructional observations. So that's excellent. In addition to that, they also noted that we had very flexible grouping, which also responded not only to our curriculum, but a little bit into that assessment, to the data that we use for our flexible grouping and instruction. So those were all strengths. Some of the areas that we found, that would fall in the low/mid range, there was a low, a mid, and a high. Obviously, you'd like to be high. A high is a score of a six or a seven. That mid-range was like really 3 to 5. And so there were three areas that were kind of in the high 3 range when you averaged them out, which is like that lower end of the middle range, which is not exactly where we want to be. And in regard to that for K to 3, was during those instructional observations, there was not enough development of concept development or oral language. They didn't see enough of that in those moments. So those are big takeaways for me, especially when we're talking about developing oral language and vocabulary, that our environment wasn't rich enough during those instructional observations. Another takeaway from instruction at that time was also about teacher feedback to students. And again, it was like maybe like that 3-8 point range. So when you're looking for teachers to give feedback to students, yes, we want positive praise, we want that feedback, but we also want to be really genuine and specific about what they're doing in that moment as opposed to, oh, good, 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 what was good. Right, so we really need to be clear about that. So that was another takeaway for us, an area for us to improve and develop over time, to really develop mastery level feedback. We do talk a lot about that, but obviously, we're not using it enough effectively. At least that was evidenced through their review. We talk about the areas for developing those. Obviously, we continue to just think about our Inclusive Practice Academy. So we've talked about that. Mrs. McCrattlin's been here, other members of the team, how we have that team of teachers that are working on universal design for learning. So part of those best practices include quality of your feedback. So the more we get more teachers involved in that training, obviously, we're going to have higher-level best practices and teaching that's more consistent across classrooms. So that's an area for us to improve. Another area for feedback that was also part of teacher report would be the very open to more informal feedback from administration. So that's the opportunity for us, when we're in there, not necessarily doing a formal write-up or observation, but to provide them feedback in the moment or later that day. That's more of a verbal feedback and not written feedback, and they're really open to that. And that's really an opportunity for us to probably give teachers more meaningful in-the-moment feedback, just like we want them to give students, that we can provide for them too, which ultimately will improve curriculum and instruction when we can do that. So that's an area for us to develop and improve. When it comes to the area for assessment, we scored overall as a district pretty high from K to 6, thinking about the consistency of the assessments that we use. I Ready, for example, is one of those, and we have that, that's vertically aligned, which is great. Central School, we've had some positive feedback remarks for our use of data, so our culture of responding to data and using that to make instructional decisions. We have data meetings three times a year that are formal, but we also use day-to-day data to inform our instruction and our flexible grouping, which kind of was a twofer with assessment and that instructional piece. So those were all positives. The area for us to really improve, and this is evident, I think, across all grades, but also specific to us, was providing teachers more time to have common planning. And that common planning would give them more opportunity to really look at that data outside of those formalized meetings, and to also look at our, you know, reliability of data and teacher rating of data across a grade and then vertically. So that's something for us to improve. For us at Central School, that really looks at my scheduling, that looks at my support staff, and the ability to provide common planning for teachers. Right now, our common planning and PLC structure is only four times a year. That's this year. Previously, we tried to do that monthly for teachers in grades K to 2. Sustaining that with staffing is part of our problem. So we're trying to be more creative and thinking outside of the box on how we can get that in, make it meaningful for teachers, and structure and sustain that. We do have grade-level weekly meetings for every grade, so that is an improvement. That does give them some time, but that collaboration is only 30 minutes once a week. So again, an area for us to develop and improve. The final area was regarding student support. Overall, the district and lower elementary scored really high with positive climate safe schools. Students felt safe. The feedback was really good, both from student level and a teacher feedback level, and also from families. In addition, at Central School, and I would say just the lower elementary, we also had good evidence of our tiered levels of support, so for our Title I and our Tier 3 supports that we offer students from an instructional standpoint to meet the wide variety of student needs. One of the areas for us to consider to improve is always parent and family engagement and ways that we invite them in and keep them part of that two-way communication process. So an area for us to continue to develop, and something that we've already started at Central School, is a parent workshop series. So every month, we just started that this year, we have a lead-in, you know, topic or theme or workshop that we provide families right before our PTO meeting. And so that's either about school-based related incentives that we're doing, our programs. Alice was one of the ones that we have done previously. You know, I can think coming up in February, we're going to talk about responsive classroom, which is one of our social-emotional curriculums. March, Mrs. McCrattlin's going to come to talk about I Ready student reports and how families can understand that data. And then in April, you know, we're looking at talking about, it's April, it's going to be math month, so we're all excited about everything math. But so every month, we will have a theme to engage families, bring them in, not only here about what's going on at Central School, ask questions being part of that process, but then hopefully to stick around and become involved with, you know, the PTO. All areas for us to, you know, improve our family and community engagement. Those were the three areas. Some of our highs, some of our areas for improvement, but that's kind of a snapshot. Any questions about that?
Do you have any questions?
I have one. So, thank you for the summary.
Sure.
So there are some action items that you're developing. We, is, the plan is that by the end of this year, we'll follow back up and say, hey, we wanted to do X, and here's the process and progress we've made on X, whatever that is?
Yes, well, that parent workshop series, for example, is already embedded in my school improvement plan. Yep, so all these things you will see evidenced in, for example, many of them, but not all, are in my school improvement plan as well.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll have Mr. Paquette come up next, and just while he's transitioning, thanks, Mrs. Byrne.
Sure.
So the district targeted review is overseen by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They contracted the work out to American Institute for Research, a private organization, who actually came out and conducted all the interviews, observations. It's not a review that's tied to corrective action, so to your point, Gordon, they won't be circling back around to see what steps we've taken as a district. It's more so for us to get some feedback, to take the information, and to take our own action steps for improvement. So to Mrs. Byrne's point, you know, certainly these things are going to be built into our school improvement plans and our district strategic plan, because we want to make sure that we utilize the 16 hours and 100 and something pages worth of information that we've received. And it's good to get an outside perspective. So nothing formal that we'll send back in indicating what we've done, but certainly something that as a district will reflect on.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that Assistant Superintendent noted that certainly there'll be a correlation between what's found in the report and then what manifests itself in our district school improvement plans and our individual school-based school improvement plans. And that was probably one of the most, one of the things that jumped out to me the most. I guess it was reassuring or validating anyway, that with our, we've had our points of focus established and reading the report, there's not much in there that, that we are not trying or attempting to address to some degree in some capacity this year moving forward, without having seen that information. So that was really a nice correlation. And I know that the report has broken it down into, you know, curriculum and instruction and assessment and student support. When we, when we look at our, our school improvement plan, or at least how we focused it over at Mitchell, it's hard to differentiate among the three of those. Like, it's hard to really, even in the report, it's hard to talk about instruction without talking about assessment, without talking about curriculum, without talking about personalizing the instruction and the curriculum for student support. So they're all intimately sort of intertwined. And so case in point, one of our biggest focuses this year was to sort of use assessment and data to drive our instruction in a very student-centered, personalized way. So we have professional learning communities and the ones that occurred early on in the year. The focus of that was to really educate the staff on how to use, for instance, the I Ready program and all of its nuanced capabilities, which ultimately, if it's done in its, in its most effective and efficient way, it is a really powerful tool to personalize instruction. So we spent a great deal of time having staff familiarize themselves with this, this unit for assessment, but also that, as you can see, drives what, how their instruction is going to, what their instruction is going to look like into the classroom. And out of that, which was really sort of reassuring, once again, is that there was such a gravitational pull and understanding of this program and the data and the relationship to, to instruction, that I can say with certainty that over 90% of our teachers, when making their student learning goals and/or their professional learning goals, it has, in some capacity, to some degree, it deals with the data and I Ready and the assessments and the instruction that will come out of it. So again, the case in point, these are all sort of synthesized in their, in their efforts moving forward. And not only did it sort of really energize the staff to kind of be reflective about their own instructional practices and how to use data to drive that instruction and personalize it to each student, they also went a step further and incorporated students into their own sort of goal-making. So they opened up the data to the students. So they sit with the individual students and say, this is, here's your performance. Here's your areas of strength. Here's your areas of weakness. Much in the same way that we're doing with this as a district and as schools, the students sat down with each of the teachers and made goals for themselves, so they can be a part of the instruction and part of the curriculum and part of the assessment and part of the student support. Again, the four of them sort of being synthesized together. That practice has carried over into our follow-up PLCs. We try to have the bulk of them focused on data to some extent. I think that's an area of need for sure, as much as it's an area of strength, you know, in its infancy. It's a, it's a, it's an area of need because it's in its infancy. There's still so much to learn about the program. And then, what do you mean when you personalize instruction? That could mean, you know, a myriad of different things, and, you know, what does that look like in real time? There's so many different ways that that can manifest itself in the classroom. And there's a lot of, you know, opportunity for professional development and learning for me, for sure. I would like to know a lot more about that program, a lot more about what that, how that works with instruction and, and the curriculum and student support. So I think that would definitely be, needs to be a continuous area of focus throughout the entire year. Now, having said that, the one thing we definitely did kind of pull out, the element that we pulled out from the other two elements, the student support concept, we looked at it more sort of in a, from a inclusivity, acceptance, feeling, feeling good about being in school. The report suggests that that came across pretty, pretty well. Having said that, overall, in the report, a lot of the things, except for pockets of excellence, were average. You know, so that's why this focus going, we can, we can be well above average. And that's why we're focusing on what we're focusing on. But we really drew deliberate attention to ensuring that students felt included. And we're, part of our education was the, the teaching of what it means to be inclusive, to accept, to recognize diversity, to, to promote it. For example, we have done things as simple as just displaying visual representation of inclusivity across the school, hanging cultural signs, promoting school-wide inclusivity whenever we can. For instance, Pink Fridays, Autism Acceptance, Black History Month, Women in History, et cetera. We want to continue to train our staff in Inclusive Practices Academy. And we have adopted a school-wide curriculum that really is, at its core, its DNA, is diversity, inclusivity, and the Wonders Program, for instance. A lot of work in education still needs to be done around that program. It's, it's, there's a lot there to a fault, to a great benefit. But there's a lot to be tapped into, much like the I Ready program. What we have put into motion, Rachel's Challenge, our KC Club, our Kindness and Compassion Club is strong. We're bringing in Boston versus Bullies. We have our Calm Classroom lessons in order. We have a, we piloted an SEL program known as Everyday Speech. We also are looking to build guidance-led SEL lessons during intervention blocks. We are exploring development, possibly even advisory program, using a program called Cultures of Dignity. And we will continue to grow our peer mentor program. Meanwhile, we always meet regularly, weekly, as a student support team, counselors, myself, other administrators, the nurse, to make sure that all of this is being maintained and staying a central focus moving forward. So it's hard to really separate, as they did compartmentalize. You have to, I guess, for, for reporting, there's people that are much smarter than are that did that report. But for the sake of like, because I don't know all of that, it's really helpful for me to understand it, how it works altogether. Even though I don't understand the nuances of each individual, I understand truly how they, how they can complement each other and how they do. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Mr. Clements.
Hello, everyone.
Evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So those are two tough acts to follow, and they each stole some of my thunder. So I'm going to try not to repeat too much. But I do want to build on what Mr. Paquette was saying. I almost, reading this and talking about the different areas, it's almost kind of like a Venn diagram in terms of just overlapping circles, the same thing that I, we can't separate any one aspect of it and look at them in silos. They're all kind of interconnected. And I do feel that as this report was broken down into early elementary and middle, the reports didn't break down necessarily by school, K to 2, 3 to 6, 7 to 12, which frankly, at first was frustrating, at least for me. But the more I thought about it, it really is kind of a vision of what we are doing as a district and where we are. And in that respect, it was kind of helpful. And I think by the time they get to high school, it is a reflection of everything that is happening, not just in this building, but in all three. And I want to start with the, the fact that jumped off the page at me the most, and we'll get to some areas for growth, but we were well, we were more than 10% above the state average. And they said that 98.8% of our graduates were considered ready for college or successful in college and career readiness. And as a district, we're going to try to improve on that, but frankly, that's pretty darn good. You know, 98.8% readiness for college and career, I think that's something that we just want to hang a hat on.
How was that measured?
Through the Department of Ed.
Okay.
Yep. Or DESI website, that's where they extrapolated it from. So having said that, I do think there were no singular glaring areas of weakness, but there were some areas where we were considered in the middle or average, and there's ways to get better some of those. They said there are pockets from their observation where we can improve some of the rigor of what is happening in the academics and in the classroom. And bluntly, that's something that we have been and will continue to be working on. So at least that's not news. That's something that we're continuing to address. But another real benefit was the equitable improvements in terms of minority participation in and around the school. And that's not just related to access of the curriculum and access of classes, although that, that was something that was there, but just in terms of all the extracurriculars and all the participation there. That, along with that 98.8%, were the two high points that kind of stood out to me. In terms of the curricular aspect and the curricular room for growth, there's a need for time. And that's something that I've talked about here before. It's going to come up in NIAS report. We're taking a look at our schedule. If we can find a way to get more time for our teachers, for our educators, get some more common planning time, that checks every box that's in there, in terms of the things that we are looking to develop. In there, that will better enable us to design and implement more advanced coursework. The assessment, there's a lot of work that has and has continued to happen, at least in this building, in the 12 months. The assessment, there's a lot of work that has and has continued to happen, at least in this building, in the twelve months since we were visited and since this report came out. There's a lot of work around assessment, the entire English department is working on it there. But if we had more time to continue that work, what that would allow us as a building to do is to adjust and share the results of those assessments and of what we're seeing more widely. Share them more widely with students, share them more widely between and amongst colleagues, share them more widely with families. In terms of our student support, some of the work that they recommended that is continuing to happen is additional training on recognizing implicit bias and how to break down barriers to increase diversity. Are we doing good work? We are. Is there more work to be done? Of course there is, but that's one of the things that recognized, that was recognized there. And really just improving access across the board, breaking down um, prerequisites in the program of studies to allow more equitable access to courses, to the wraparound and support services that I know Superintendent Legault has talked about repeatedly. I mean, even this weekend responding to um, KINs that were happening throughout the town and the communication that was happening between school and police on a Saturday and on a Sunday, to make sure that when we came back, we knew what was in place. Now, that's more of a specific example, but that would be something that I would highlight as, yes, we are doing the work that is being recommended that we continue to address. And that's kind of what education is, I mean, if we're not actively moving forward, we're moving backward. But those were a couple of the curricular, the assessment and the student support bullets that jumped out. Any questions?
I'm curious, since I'm not familiar with how this all works. The assessment, the observation that students were ninety-eight percent, whatever, ready for uh, college, et cetera, beyond. Do they, do they interview a large number of seniors? How do, how do they, how do they come up with that, I wonder?
So I'm, oh, go ahead.
So it's the, the data that's collected through the Department of Ed, so it's the program we offer and our graduation rate that determines.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
So, so that, that information that was provided in the report didn't come from any of the interviews or the observations that took place. It was strictly from data they took from the Department of Ed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll make sure that we have the full report available to everyone, but certainly the takeaways and highlights that were noted tonight from the principals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one last thing to share, just before I turn it back over to Superintendent Legault. Uh, we just received notification from um, Governor's Office that we have been awarded the Math Acceleration Vacation Academy Grant uh, again this year, so we will be offering Acceleration Academies um, over February vacation and April vacation for students in grades three through ten. So unlike last year, last year, we didn't have as good participation rates at grade seven through ten. So what we've decided this year, we will open it up to all students, grade seven through ten. And then based on the application we get, we will then prioritize based on need. If we, you know, can't fill every spot, then certainly we'll just keep opening it up for every student that's interested in attending.
I'm curious about something. So what, um, you said grade seven through ten, so is there or could there be eleventh and twelfth graders who also might be lacking in the math or that might need math assistance?
There could, but the grant only allows us to cover grades three through ten. So as we look to, to do academies maybe more over the summer that are funded through the district, certainly we have that flexibility, but because it is a, a grant, it holds us to the requirements.
Thank you.
I just asked Bill to stay up, he wanted to give a cer- a public service announcement about his college courses that are going to be offered.
So the public service announcement slash commercial slash endorsement, we do still have room for some students to fit into both of our courses that are scheduled to start up within, probably right around the twentieth of January, relative to Criminal Justice and Psychology. So since I, I put something out uh, earlier this week to the community, to the parents, to try to, to push a little bit, the Criminal Justice course is closer to full, we still have room for, for a few there. Um, but we also have room for our Psychology course as well. So to the masses listening at home and if anyone has students primarily um, eleventh and twelfth grade, I think the bulk at this point is eleventh. It's a little tougher to convince some of the seniors that this is worth the effort now, although
For their parents.
For their parents and for the fact that again, it's going to be another three college credits that they are earning. And we will be very flexible and offer a lot of support here in-house. That's something that we're very excited about and we're looking to build, now that we have this, we're looking to build our momentum from the fall where we had one, to the spring where we have two offerings. And we're very excited about what's going to be coming also.
How many kids would you say you have enrolled in each class?
I want to say we're probably a little under fifteen for the Psychology and probably around seventeen or eighteen for the Criminal Justice. I have not had a chance in the last forty-eight hours to connect with guidance however, so those numbers may have crept up a little bit.
Well, that's good.
Those sound healthy enough to still run though, right? There's no
Yes.
Yeah, awesome, awesome.
They ask for fifteen.
So in the, the college class, when they take the college class, they'll get, uh, it'll count as an AP class towards their GPA.
Yes.
And then when they get to college, if they do take another level of Psychology, they can go to the two oh, two oh one or whatever the number is.
Yes.
So that's good.
It, it's the same, they're, they would be taking, they're earning massive way at college credit. So it would be the same as any receiving institution, however they would choose to honor. I mean, that's by far the, the most common way. You might have one college somewhere that doesn't or chooses not to, but far and away. I mean, if, if my kids were old enough, I'd be putting them into this opportunity as well.
And Psychology translates to all careers.
Yes, absolutely, I couldn't agree, yes.
Understanding human behavior applies to everything.
Maybe we'll have a guest lecturer coming up at some point.
Bill has plenty of kids.
Just saying, it would not be wasted time.
Thank you, Bill.
You're very welcome.
So I'm, I'll move the, I'll move the agenda um, to one of, a very important piece of what we are doing here in East Bridgewater and I believe it, a very important piece across the Commonwealth and across the country. And the more and more we read each day in the paper, read on the news or hear on the news about social emotional well-being and about our children.
Before Mr. Clemens leaves, we're going to be talking about this.
He's coming back.
Oh, okay.
And I, he knows. He's got a basketball game. Our children are faced each day with an array of difficult situations that they have to traverse. And we all traverse our lives in different ways. We are lucky enough to have been to been acquainted with Jim Johnson. Not in the greatest ways of who wants to be introduced to somebody, but we are lucky enough to have Jim here this evening who, he will tell your, his story, his family's story. And in November, if you remember, I brought it and said I met with Jim Johnson who, he and his family are the founders of Kyle Cares and he's going to talk to you about that in a moment. And I had, um, he graciously gave us a big sign, this is Kyle Cares, we believe in social emotional health and that it's not a stigma and that we want students to know that um, you can go to any adult in this building, you can come to me in this building and have someone listen, have someone that cares and have someone reach out to get somebody who understands and can maybe help you navigate through a difficult situation. Jim and I had this conversation, Kyle Cares has come and presented to our student body and then um, Jim came to me about the JED Foundation, he will talk about that in a few minutes, and said, Liz, we will bring this, you know, it's going to cost, we'll give you a grant, Kyle Cares will give you a grant for this program that many across the country are using and many in the Commonwealth are using and it, it costs about twenty-five thousand dollars. And he said to me, I think I can get you five thousand dollars from Kyle Cares. And I said, okay, I brought it to you, I said, you know, I'm going to need about twenty thousand dollars from you. I know that Rebecca Fidler is, is a big proponent of this, so she's like, we'll get the money, we'll figure it out and yes, we want this program. Fast forward to uh, right before Christmas, uh, Jim reached out and said, hey Liz, um, we'd like to come to East Bridgewater and we'd like to pay for this entire program and offer you a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars and to bring the program. Which we are excited about and graciously accept and I hope that you will accept, but I've asked Jim to come because the story that he's going to talk about and to tell you is real. And our community needs to hear it from somebody who's lived it, who understands it and who will live with it for the rest, for every day. But he's also willing to help us maybe figure out some things at, earlier and help our students figure out things earlier. And for us as a school committee, superintendent, staff, district, that what do we need and what do we have to do and put in place so that we never have to deal with this as a community? And um, having him come on a Zoom or having him send slides and say, hey, just give these to your school committee. I spoke to Jim yesterday, we, we've gone back and forth on emailing and, but we always speak. And he said, I'll come. Uh, we spoke last week, I asked him to come because I think it's important. These are the things, you know, we talk about money all the time and we talk about curriculum and we talk about good instruction and we talk about how many more teachers do we need and, and do we get some more VNs and what's our, you know, you know, what's going on with Central School, what's going on here, what's going on there? But it really comes down to our kids. And if our kids feel good, then we feel good. And if our kids don't feel good, like Kate Byrne would always say to me, we have little kids with big needs and big problems, we can't, it takes us a little while to figure it out. And then, as Mr. Clemens would say to me, we have big kids. We know their problem, but it's so complicated now because we're trying to fix it and we're trying to get to it so quickly. And I think Jim's story will help us, I don't know if it makes us understand it better, I don't know if it helps us, you know, fight it better, but what it does is it makes it human and it makes, I hope, our community and all of you understand that this is the reason we're bringing Kyle Cares and the JED Foundation to East Bridgewater. Jim, come on up, please. And I, I just want to thank you prior to even beginning to, for coming here and to talking to, to us about your story and about what you'll bring to us.
So um, thank you for having me tonight. The principle we want to talk about is where you're headed with the JED Foundation, but in order to get to that point, I'm just going to give you some background about our own foundation and the relationship that Kyle Cares has with the JED Foundation, so you can understand how we got to where we are tonight. So Kyle Cares, we're based in North Attleboro. We start, my wife Sue and my daughters Katie and Lauren started Kyle Cares in memory of our son Kyle, who died by suicide a little over four and a half years ago. We primarily are focused on working with high schools and colleges in New England who are interested in bringing in programs, mental health awareness and suicide prevention programs, to support the mental well-being of their students. And whenever we um, have any conversation about the foundation itself, I think it's important to understand Kyle's background and a little bit about his personality so that you can understand his full story, but also understand the importance of where you're headed and, and the decision you guys have made to go down this route with the JED Foundation. So Kyle was a um, he was a very compassionate person. He spent a lot of time in his lifetime, half of his life, uh, working with the special needs community. So when he was in uh, middle school and high school and college, he was involved in organizations like Best Pals and Best Buddies and so forth. He was an Honored Society student in the classroom, he was involved in a lot of activities, he was fully engaged in high school, playing sports and other extracurricular activities. He um, comes from a large family, a large extended family, he has over twenty-first cousins. This is a picture of Kyle with his older daughter, older sisters Katie and Lauren, so um, and you know, and his core group of friends and so forth, so he had a strong support network to lean on as well if he chose to. And he was a very funny person, he was always laughing, always smiling, making other people do the same. He was actually voted the funniest male student in his graduating class at North Attleboro. So I share all this with you, not to put Kyle on a pedestal or brag about my son, I'm trying to paint a picture for you of someone who struggled with mental illness for ten years of his life. And if you have a vision in your head of which students here in East Bridgewater might be struggling with mental illness, if Kyle were one of your students, he might be the last person that you might write on a list of someone you might be, need to be concerned about. He was the type of student that was flying under the radar unless you knew him, you know, intimately and you knew his story well. So I think it speaks to the importance of a high school or a college or a school district having a game plan or a strategy that reaches as much as possible every student in the building and on the campus. Because you really don't know which ones are struggling, there's a lot of kids out there across the country, male and female like Kyle, who outwardly are laughing and smiling and looking as if life is grand, but internally they're, they're in a lot of turmoil. So what we do with Kyle Cares is we work with schools to try and help them create a culture within the school that is one that is more empathetic and more caring and supportive of people who might be struggling. And there's really, it's a two-pronged approach at a real, you know, fifty thousand foot macro level. The left-hand side of this slide is just basically getting people to talk more openly and getting people more comfortable talking on a daily basis about mental health, about mental illness, about mental wellness, right? When we speak to students, we try and drive home the point to kids that, you know, just because they might be struggling doesn't mean they're weak, it doesn't mean they're a failure, it doesn't mean their parents have failed and how they've raised them. And it's certainly nothing to be ashamed of to the point where you would withhold or hold back from asking for help. The right-hand side of this slide talks about education, but it's not education for just the kids, it's education for everyone in their lives. So their parents, their caregivers, their faculty and staff, making sure everyone understands what signs and symptoms to look for in kids that might be struggling. Learning how to have conversations with, if I'm a, if I'm a student, how to have a conversation with a friend or a peer that I might be concerned about. Or as a parent, how to have a conversation with my son or daughter. Asking the right questions in a non-judgmental way. Making sure everyone knows what resources are available, either in the school or in the community, so that you can try and bridge the gap between the kids that need the help and the help that's available. But you know, one of the statistics that I don't have on this particular slide is fifty to seventy-five percent of all mental illnesses can be diagnosed between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four. But two out of every three kids that struggle never ask for help. So if no one knows they need the help, no one can get them the help, I think a lot of them want to, but they hesitate to ask for it. The key to the whole conversation though is the graph in the middle, right? And that is the belief that everyone needs to play a role in trying to create this culture. It can't fall in the lap of the superintendent's office or the building principals. Everyone needs to play a role, so families, friends, teachers, coaches, trusted adult advisors like the librarian or the people that work in the lunchroom or the bus drivers, everyone needs to play a role in trying to create this culture that is more caring and supportive, looks out for kids, creates a safety net for kids so that they get to the point where they have the confidence and their parents or grandparents have the confidence to ask for help if they think they need it. So think of Kyle Cares, we're like a middleman, right? So what we do is we go out and have conversations with schools and we sit down and try and understand what they're doing today, what programs and policies schools already have in place today, what their needs might be, where they might have gaps. And we know every school is different, right? There's no cookie cutter solution to this problem. You can't wrap, wrap a solution up and send it out to all three hundred and seventy high schools in Massachusetts and say, implement this and we're going to be good, right? Your school is unique based on the number of students you have, the demographics of your students, the budget you have set aside for these types of programs, the programs you already have in place today, all of that will play a factor in what you want or need next. So once we figure all that out, we do three things with Kyle Cares. We connect schools with valuable mental health resources that can provide solutions to fill those gaps. One of which is the JED Foundation, which I'll get to more in a minute. to fill those gaps, one of which is the JED Foundation, which I'll get to more in a minute. The second thing we do is we facilitate conversations typically with the people in this room, school committees and superintendents and principals, to help them set long-term strategy for supporting their students' mental well-being. And then we provide grants, we provide funding to schools to offset some of the costs of programs they want to bring in. So I mentioned Kyle passed away around four and a half years ago. We are coming up on our four-year anniversary in March as a foundation, and in the first four years, we've invested over $215,000. So that's through grants that we've given, we've given to schools, or grants we've put back into our five partners to support the great work that we're doing, that they're doing. And we've impacted, you know, nearly, nearly 70 schools and organizations. These are just some of the logos of many of the schools. You know, we're in North Attleboro, like I said, so we've morphed out from southeastern Massachusetts in the beginning, but, you know, we're in west, we have schools in western Mass, Mashpee on Cape Cod, we have a couple of schools now in Rhode Island, and we just, we just started working with our first school up in Freeport, Maine. So our, our, our brand is getting out there, we have people proactively reaching out to us now instead of us reaching out to them. And you'll notice, you know, your logo is on the second, second row there in the middle. We have provided small grants to East Bridgewater in the past to support some work that the school was doing for Professional Development Day, and we'll continue to work with you on other areas. Now, I'm not gonna get into all the details of what all the different partners do, other than to say this. Everything that we do, just like everything you do, is geared towards helping the students, right? But if we're really gonna change the culture and get everyone comfortable and better educated when it comes to mental health topics, then there's really four key stakeholders that we need to focus on. There's the students themselves, the faculty and staff, the parents, and then the administration. And when I talk about the administration, I'm talking about that long-term strategy. Our partners, you know, Samaritans in Boston, they're a regional organization, they do a lot of great work in Massachusetts. But the other four, Active Minds is in Washington DC, the Healthy Minds Network is based out of the University of Michigan, Mining Your Mind is in Pennsylvania, but they have a location in Newton, Massachusetts, and then the JED Foundation is in New York. They all have a national presence, right? They have a national footprint, and they are highly respected organizations. Each of them offers unique solutions that complement each other, but more importantly, they complement the long-term strategy that you guys are about to implement. And it's also a strategy from the JED Foundation that's been around for 10 years. So nearly 450 colleges have implemented this strategy, or excuse me, this comprehensive framework, including over 30 of them here in Massachusetts, right? So I just want to make sure that you guys understand, you're not blazing a trail for the first time on your own, you're not an island, you know, by yourselves. You're going down the path that is evidence-based, that over 450 colleges, and I'll show you another slide with nearly 100 high schools already that are going down, so there's a lot of, you know, industry best practices to learn from this framework. Some of the sample programs, you know, we've helped nearly 20 schools, high schools and colleges in the area start student-led, they call them Active Minds chapters, but think of it as a club that's focused on mental health. But it's the students taking the lead and encouraging each other to learn more and talk more about mental health and to seek help without shame or without hesitation. We have, we sponsor suicide prevention workshops for students and faculty, educational overviews for parents, so a lot of schools will schedule a night like this on a weeknight in an auditorium and invite parents in, we'll bring a clinician in to educate people on anxiety and depression and so forth like that. Some schools will bring in young adult speakers, so these are people in their mid to late twenties who are living with mental illness right now, but they're leading very happy, productive lives because they've gained the courage to ask for help, they've, they've started seeing a therapist, they've started taking medication, they've made lifestyle changes, and they deliver a message of hope to the students that they speak with that just because you might be going through a tough stretch right now doesn't mean your life is doomed. Everything, everything we do, everything our partners do with their programs, it's all geared towards de-stigmatizing mental health and, you know, encouraging help-seeking behavior amongst the students. All right, so let's talk about the JED Foundation. So we had those kind of conversations over the last three or four years with the administration here, with Dr. Williams, with, with Liz and so forth, and we have the type of partnership now where we can pick up the phone at any point, and people from East Bridgewater will call me and say, hey, we're having a mental health fair, is there anything you could do to help us? And I can pick up the phone and say, hey, there's a great opportunity with the JED Foundation, I think you should look at it. And that's what happened here. So the JED Foundation is a multi-billion dollar nonprofit based in New York City. They are going into their 23rd year, they are probably one of the most highly respected organizations in the country when it comes to supporting teen and young adult mental health. They have developed this comprehensive approach for high schools and colleges, we're gonna focus on the high school one tonight, and it's all about providing a framework that helps support and improve student mental health and prevent, prevent suicide. What they've done is, based on their years of knowledge and years of experience working with schools, they have identified seven key, and you can look at the pinwheel while I'm talking here, seven key domains or areas that they feel like schools should focus their time, energy, and money on, improving the programs and policies in these areas to have the greatest impact on as many students as possible in your school. So if you just start roughly 11 o'clock on the, on the pinwheel, I'm just gonna go through at a high level, so, you know, one of the domains is developing life skills. So this is all focused on social emotional learning, right? Are you, are you teaching the kids how to manage relationships and friendships, how to make smart, healthy living decisions on their own? Are you promoting social connectedness and school connectedness, so that no matter what neighborhood a student is from, no matter what activities they're involved with here in the school, do they at least feel like they're part of the school community? Are you encouraging help-seeking behavior? So, you know, do, do students feel like there's a stigma wrapped around mental health and mental illness in East Bridgewater? And if so, is that prohibiting them from reaching forward and asking for help? Or do students want to ask for help, but they're just not aware of what resources are available? So these are the types of things that you can focus on to make sure that you're addressing. The, in the, around 4 o'clock on the pinwheel, basically, it's a long-winded way of saying, are you training your faculty and staff on a regular basis so that they understand what signs and symptoms to look for in their students, and so that your teachers have confidence? You know, we ask teachers to do a lot, right, all the time? But it's hard to ask them to help their students with their mental health if you don't train them on what to look for in, in the mental health symptoms to look for. The other three categories I think are more tactical. One is ensuring that your students have access to mental health services, you know, do you have a crisis management procedures in place in case there is a problem? And are you promoting means safety? So the simplest example of that might be making sure that students don't have access to the roof of the building where they could potentially hurt themselves. So the way the process works is, it's a three-year engagement. The JED Foundation will assign a high school advisor to work with East Bridgewater, and the, in the course of the first year, East Bridgewater is gonna form an interdisciplinary team of people, and the first task that they will have is to complete a self-assessment of all the programs and policies you have in place today as they're tied to these seven key domains. In parallel, the students will be surveyed to understand their attitudes towards help-seeking behaviors and mental health here in East Bridgewater, and the faculty be, will also be surveyed and assessed to, so that we can learn what their understanding is of what resources are available and so forth here in East Bridgewater. The results of all three of those assessments will be compiled by the JED Foundation into a report, I like to refer to it as a gap analysis report. So they're gonna highlight all the things that you're doing really well today in these seven areas, and you want to keep those in place and just build around them. And based on their years of working with other schools, and based on industry best practices, they're gonna identify where they think you might have gaps. And then over the course of the last two years of the three-year engagement, you're gonna collaborate with the JED Foundation to prioritize those gaps, come up with a game plan, and then figure out how you want to, you know, methodically, methodically start filling those gaps over the course of time. The theory is, at the end of the three years, you'll be in a real solid place to stand on your own and move forward with a long-term, sustainable approach to mental well-being. The analogy I like to use is, you know, if you're building a brand-new house from scratch from the ground up, the first two things you need, you need a blueprint to follow, and you need a solid foundation to build upon, and that's exactly what this is. This is the blueprint to follow. And like I mentioned before, it's, there's no cookie cutter solution, right? It's gonna be unique, they're gonna tailor it to what you need here at East Bridgewater High School, because what you need is different from what West Bridgewater needs and what Bridgewater State needs, and you're all within five miles of each other. All right? You know, we, we do talk about it under the realm of mental health, but the schools that implement this see positive impacts in areas such as chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, certainly improving the school culture and so forth, and, and helping reduce substance misuse. This, this is just a slide that talks about the three assessments that I've already told you guys about, and this is just a timeline that talks about the path of how you'll move in, in the three years. So the, you'll start off forming that interdisciplinary team and completing those assessments, then you'll get into the strategic planning, so that's when the JED Foundation will come out and sit with you, sit with the interdisciplinary team and, and map out a game plan and point out the areas that they think you could potentially need help. Now, the JED Foundation, they're going to be consultants, right? They're gonna be joined at the hip with you for the three-year period. They're gonna make recommendations, but you guys will always make the decisions, right? So if you need to improve a policy or a program in a specific domain area, they might, you know, one of the, they might give you three or four to choose from, but then you're gonna make that decision, right? The beauty is, they have been vetting hundreds of programs for the last several years, they have seen what works and what doesn't work at 500 other schools, so they're gonna be doing a lot of upfront homework for you guys, and all you need to do is make the decision. So, and then years two and into three, you're doing the implementation, and then at the end, you're gonna redo those assessments in the third year to compare, you know, year one to year three. Some of the critical elements for a successful outcomes, you know, one is making sure you have support and engagement from senior leadership, so I think you can check that off the box that, you know, you're all here tonight and you've made this decision, so kudos to all of you. You know, it's the commitment to a long-term strategic planning, so getting that interdisciplinary team together and making sure everyone is held accountable and maintains their focus for the full three years. And another key point is the shared vision of what we talked about earlier, that it's everyone's responsibility to play a role in trying to change this culture. And then the last point, making sure that you have diverse voices involved in the interdisciplinary team. So, I mean, we could talk for hours about the statistics for teens and mental health issues and suicidal ideation, there are different pockets of students that are struggling even more, right? The numbers are high to begin with, but then for BIPOC students, LGBTQ students, there are different marginalized groups that are struggling even more, so you want to make sure that when we're implementing the solution with the JED Foundation, that it's an equitable implementation that takes into an account or into consideration all of the different groups. The, I mentioned the JED campus, so that's what they call the college version of this, has been around for 10 years, JED High School has been around for two and a half years. But there's over 90 schools across the country that have, you know, signed up and started the process, and 12 of those are here in Massachusetts, you know, and, you know, seven and, six or seven of those have been through working with Kyle Cares. So again, you're, you're not blazing a trail by yourself, you're not a guinea pig with this project at all. So that leads us to the opportunity you took advantage of. You know, because we were already having conversations about the JED Foundation and this comprehensive framework, we knew you were interested in it. And then at the end of the year, the, the opportunity arose, and I just have to, I do have to correct one thing, we were, Kyle Cares was given credit for this $25,000 grant, but it's the JED Foundation that's underwriting the entire cost for you and up to 25 to 30 other high schools in Massachusetts. So they're trying to get a cohort of schools to start the process at the same time together. They have a philanthropic partner in New York that is willing to help them expand their presence in Massachusetts. So that's, that's the opportunity that arose, but it had a short window for, in order for them to secure the funding, they needed commitments from schools, you know, fairly quickly. But the work itself doesn't have to begin until September, right? Once it does begin in September, all the schools in the cohort will be, will be beginning at the same time, and they're all gonna have the same high school advisor. The plan is, or plans are in play, or in the works, I should say, to potentially have some in-person cohort gatherings so that the schools can get together in person, swap ideas, see what's going well, what's not going well. Some of the other schools so far that are in the cohort along with you guys, Bellingham, Conker-Carlisle, Hopkinton, Nipmuck Regional, which is in Upton, Mass, Norton, Penn Tucket, Randolph, Weymouth, and we have three or four others that are, are very close to, to signing. For the, the two key next steps, even though this doesn't have, have to happen till September, the first is, we want to schedule an overview this month, just with you and, you know, some of your staff. We don't need the interdisciplinary team yet, but I want to schedule a Zoom with, with JED and you guys. And then the second step is, JED in the April-May timeframe, they'll schedule a more, a specific, a call that is specific to the starting point in September, so that everyone understands what needs to be in place, so you can hit the ground running in September. And, you know, basically, I'll, I'll just say, you know, we greatly appreciate the partnership we have with you guys, and, you know, it's a long-term process, right? Looking after students' mental well-being has to be an ongoing process for years. And, you know, we'll be here, we'll help out wherever we can with those four key stakeholders that we talked about. We're excited that you're going down this path. The JED Foundation is a terrific partner to work with, you know, and I stand in front of people and talk about the JED Foundation, I have 100% confidence because I know, you know, they, they deliver results. Any questions? I know I was a mouthful.
Thank you.
That's it.
I have no questions, I just have to say, I'm so proud of our district for doing this and for being part of that 25 that's rolling out, and then also for being part of something that's the high schools getting involved, and you think about the amount of high schools in the country and that number we just saw, and that we're gonna be part of that, I am beyond proud of what our district is doing to focus on mental health.
JED's goal is to, they have a three- to five-year plan, they want to be in 1,500 high schools, you know, at the end of that five-year plan, but you guys are gonna be one of the first 90.
JED, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're still yours.
Mrs. Byrne, you wanna sit next to me for a minute?
So, thank you. I mean, the support that we need for the JED Foundation, the Kyle Cares, I don't think anybody can dispute that we need support in this area. What this helps me with, helps Dr. Williams with it, is it's gonna help us with the plan. And I think Jim, Jim understands that along with everybody else, that there's so much on the plate, having them come in, and we're not starting like, all right, let's start this program, let's try to do it. It's set up, it's gonna work, or what didn't work at someplace might work here, what did, what works here might not work someplace else, and they give you that opportunity. But I, I look forward to having them here, out in the foyer and going into the gymnasium area. The kids see that sign every morning. We, it's hung, it, it says we care, and we hope the kids see that. We're very lucky, and I just hope that we continue to be lucky in that respect, that we don't have to go through what Jim and his family have, but he's taken it to this next level, and I hope that, in that level, that Kyle continues with us and continues to work with us and helps, helps us work with other students, so. I thank you for your support on that. I'm gonna have Mrs. Byrne, Mrs. Byrne and I just wanted to update you on the, the Central School Elementary School. We were invited to join the MSBA's core program, which is very exciting. This core, the invitation only is for possible renovation or possible rebuild. At this time, we are in the most preliminary stages of this game, and what it is right now is we haven't, and the clock has not started for us. The clock begins on April- The clock begins on April 3rd, 2023. We start the initial compliance certification, saying that yes, the towns and the schools want to get into this process and start to move forward. And then by June 2nd, 2023, we need to put together a school building committee. Mrs. Byrne and I have talked about this, we continue to talk about this. She will start to bring it up to her school council and at her, at her school meetings. Tomorrow, I have coffee with the superintendent at, at the Central School in the cafeteria. It's at 6:30, I believe, or 6:45. You had a meeting, so I had to push it back. Somebody has a meeting in there, so we pushed it back. But it's 6:30, and I will bring it up there. And it's important for us to have stakeholders. We will have to have some members of the school committee, we'll have to have members select, then we'll have to have FinCom, we have to have a lot of people on this committee. I do want everybody to know this is, it's an arduous task. This is not, hey, listen, we're going to go, we're going to, we're going to get this committee together, they're going to come in, they're going to say, yes, do this, and it's going to be overnight. This is, we're looking at a three-to-five-year process to, to get to where we hope that East Bridgewater will get. By July 3rd, we have to do some educational profile questionnaires, online enrollment projection, certification, I have to certify our enrollments, maintenance and capital planning information, what we've done to maintain East Bridgewater, Central School, and what we have on the docket for capital planning for the district and Central School. The biggest, what we need, December 29th, 2023, that we need that for this time, is the, a town vote to us, allow us to go forward for the feasibility study. And the feasibility study, from what we are understanding, I am not, I, I, from other districts and from other OPMs, and what we are hearing is, could be upwards from $80,000 to $1 million. What this does is it brings in a company to do a feasibility study on the district and on the town, as they did for this building for the high school. What it will do is it will look at the location, our enrollments, what we're looking for doing, look at the, the building itself, possibly to relocate if it is a redesign and a reconstruction, or a possible renovation. Yes, we have put $1 million into the roof, and 56.6% was MSBA grant money. We also did the same thing with the boiler project. We do have a new boiler. And that's where I would say that as much as, and I'm going to pass it over to Kate, as much as we lo, we love Central School, it is where our most neediest, our most at-risk student population is, because they're babies. They can't drive, they can't maneuver very well at three and a half. They're getting there, but they've got to figure it out, and we start them there at our building. Kate would tell you that 81 people were at her building by 7:30, 7:45 the other day, and by nine, or I think it was 80, 41 people were there by 7:45, and by the time Kate and Mrs. Harvey got done letting people through the door, they were at 81.
By the end of the first day.
By the end of the first day. For preschool.
Registration.
That's our, that's our largest enrollment that we've ever had. So enrollment is moving, COVID happened, and we're moving forward. With that being said, we know that Central School is out of space. We knew that in 2006. We had modulators brought in. We also knew that because we moved the third grade to the Mitchell, the seventh grade to the high school, and so forth and so on, seven, eight. We also know that there are two wings, one 1951 and 1961.
Roughly.
Roughly. You can see the crack in the building where one, where 1951 was to 1961. We know that we don't have a sprinkler system. We know that we don't have an alarm system for fire alarms. We go through a lot of batteries. We know that we don't want to touch the windows. We know that education hasn't stopped, the high quality of instruction hasn't stopped, but we're out of space. They're our neediest population, and our enrollment has just shown us that 81 preschoolers have showed up. And I'm sure they all want, more than half of them begged Kate on the way out, please put me in the full-day, five-day program, because people are going back to work, and we're seeing more of that. So, with that being said, I'm going to let Kate just talk about a few, and I want to thank Kate Byrne. She has been, she's been steering this project alongside of me. She met with MSBA with us. She actually was the lead speaker at the day when we met with MSBA. She has not changed what she thinks should happen, she's not waving, she just wants the best possible educational facility that we can offer our students here in East Bridgewater. But if you want to talk about some of the reasons that you think that this is a good thing and that why we're moving forward, some of the things that you.
Absolutely. I mean, I think you touched upon many of the key points. I think when you look at Central School, what we know about the community is that it's a staple here, right? It's beautiful, it's charming, it's quaint, and we've always heard it's got great bones, right? It's beautiful. With that being said, what we do know is that when we think about 21st learning and 21st education and teaching instruction, our electrical is a problem. From a system standpoint to classroom standpoint, it's really outdated and very antiquated. You know, some examples, we walked MSBA through, and things that some of the school committee members may have seen if you were on the committee a couple of years ago when we did some building tours. When we have electrical outlets and holes in a wall with an extension cord from one room to the other to allow a power supply, can we make things work? Yes, we can, and we do, but when you really think about, should we be doing that? And what can our, the capacity of our building support? And so what we know is we've, we're close to exceeding what the building can handle for our electrical output on a day-to-day basis. And with 21st century learning, we have moments when teachers have to unplug certain devices in their room to operate something else. And we also know there are times when we're popping circuits, because the teacher wants their Juno speaker on, they might need that window AC unit if we can run it, and their new touch view, which is beautiful and wonderful, but requires another level of electricity that we didn't used to have. So we know that's something that needs to be looked at. Our plumbing is also a constant challenge for us, whether we're talking about plumbing for restrooms and bathrooms and water supplies and sinks, which are leaky, blocked, to other things like our Univents. So the boiler project was great, but it only looked at things within the boiler room. So we still have steam heat, we still have forced hot water heat, we have linking Univents that we've turned off that we don't have working at all, because if we do, we can't, we can't stop the leak, right? We can't figure out how to make it run. The traps are old, the steam traps are old, so, and the shut-offs are, there aren't very many. So when they can add a new one, they do. But, so we're seeing a lot of tired systems that are failing regularly. So are we working with facilities and custodial staff to continue to maintain those? We are. Because what we want, we're proud of our building, but our building, our building needs a lot of support and help to continue to, to grow with us. As far as space, we use every ounce of space that we do have. It was great when third grade did move up, when we had the modulators added, what has also changed is we now have full-day kindergarten. So we used to need, you know, three or four rooms, well, now we need seven or eight, because that's what full-day K looks like and sounds like. So we're using old spaces that might have been storage rooms, common areas, and we're using them for small group instruction, special education services. And while we need this wonderful influx of adjustment counselors and support for the social-emotional needs of our students that we all know we need, Kyle Care's would advocate for that, again, that's more space. Nursing staff, well, COVID helped us all get some more nursing, and the medical needs of our students, regardless of COVID, are on the rise in increase. So I need double the nursing space. So all of these things were, were tight. And so I've got people tripled and quadrupled up in rooms and spaces right now, just so that we can survive day-to-day. Do they do it with a smile? Absolutely. So we've come very commonplace to intruding on services and providers and everybody smiling and waving quietly as we go from one room to the next to get to instruction while we interrupt instruction on a daily basis. Yes. And when we think about many of those things, ADA compliance, we don't have an elevator, we do have a lift that goes from the bottom floor to the main floor, but not to the top floor, something that we do have a variance to be able to operate, which we still have to regularly provide maintenance to, to keep that working. And we do have students that require that. We are also working with the lifts for our ramps and making sure that they're actually compliant based on the regulation and the slope, because those are things that are ongoing challenges that we face with our sloping surfaces at Central School, as well as just thinking accessibility in general. We're looking to increase access and equity on our playground and all these other surfaces. And I know Mr. Shea is trying to support us through the town to get some ARPA funds to do that. But these are things that we need to be providing and should be providing to our students within the community and at Central School. There's lots of things, like we could continue to go on, but between the cafeteria space, that's also a coffee space, to considering our kitchen and the inability to, to solve some of these plumbing problems that require the, our kitchen staff haven't been able to operate their, their washing machines and sinks for a couple of years, because unfortunately that clog just can't be reached, no matter how far you snake or what you do. And we have that in some of our classrooms, where they can't operate and use their sinks, they're turned off. So San Natasha was great during COVID, because kids can't even wash their hands. But can these problems be solved? Absolutely. The great part about moving forward, we have our eligibility period, hopefully the town will be supportive to be able to move on once we get through that, and that we do our due diligence to follow suit, to make sure that we're in compliance of achieving all those tasks within the required amount of time. If the community then supports the feasibility study, then we go into period two, and then really feasibility study is not until step three, so we're not even there yet. But the funding for it would be the crucial step. And that would be the information to help us to understand, what is it going to look like and sound like? How much is it going to cost to renovate Central School, to bring it to where it needs to be? The modular units that were put down in 2006, '07, that's, you know, the life expectancy is about 15 years. We've just surpassed that. And so are we still using them? Yes. Are we still maintaining them? Yes. They're big, beautiful rooms, they are. But we know it's coming down to, you know, sort of the end of its life expectancy. So what do you do with that? How do we recreate that space or maybe rebuild that space? Like, all of these things would be considered in that feasibility study. What we also know is that Central School should really have at least two playgrounds. Preschool should always have a separate playground. That is not new news to us. What we know is we have a small plot of land, right? We're on a postage stamp. So when we think about what we really need to be in compliance for lots of regulations, those are things that would also need to be considered, and that would be part of that feasibility study. They would be looking at all of those types of things.
John's going to need an oxygen mask in a minute. He's about to have a heart attack. He's thinking about all the.
I don't think you left anything, huh?
Well, what I will, what I will share are the things that you may be aware of and may not know. And some of the, I talked about the sloping challenges that we have with our land. It has been better, and we saw, we improved this about two years ago perhaps by putting in a new drain outside a part of our, the school building of where the modular unit is in our first floor. What we had happening, and it still does happen on occasion, but not nearly as often, is we flood. So if now this new drain isn't clear between the slope of the land from the front of Central coming down towards the mods is this beautiful hill. We used to have a shed, there used to be a lot more trees, those are now gone. So we have a lot of water that comes down. It was flooding in one door of the modular ramp, across inside the building, and out the other door, through the hall. And so it would go up the ramp and down. And so obviously, we want to solve that problem. We're not proud to highlight that, but these are the things that unfortunately I need to make sure that we're all well aware of when we talk about the things that need improvement. Now, it's only flooded once in the last year with the new drain, and the custodian's been really diligent about making sure it's clean and clear, that to the best of their ability. But when you have a bad storm and the water's coming down at a rapid rate, clean drain still isn't going to help us. So we know that.
I don't want to interrupt you, but.
It's okay.
Certainly on a roll there.
I can stop, because sometimes people, you don't want to put all the things out there.
People are going to faint. There's no doubt, I've taken a tour of the building, there's no debate about the fact that the building needs help, perhaps even replacement. And so I'm, I'm curious, the feasibility study, I'm assuming, is going to come from a third-party professional organization that's either going to say, you can renovate it for X dollars, or you can replace it for Y dollars, and they each have their own pluses and minuses, correct? Okay. And so that's not going to come from us as a school committee or what? That's going to come from a third-party, assuming we go that route. And that's, that's key. And I will, you know, talk about mental health and safety just now, some of these things border on physical safety.
Yes.
And that is not, that is a serious matter. And so, like I said, from the couple tours I've taken of the building, it's, there's no debate there. And so I'm hoping that we can express that to the town in very demonstrative terms, which you're going to be the lead person on that, and, and they can understand, and I'm sure as a person in the town, they're thinking all taxes, dollar signs. No doubt, that's a legitimate concern. But, by the same token, it's also legitimate concerns about how can you effectively teach students in that, that building, and can we keep them safe?
Right.
So, no doubt, it's certainly warranted.
And other things that are also, obviously, those basic things that we know right now, but the other part to that is also considering about, you know, looking at the future of what we know about the town and its developments, right? What's coming, and making sure that we're being thoughtful about what that's going to look like and sound like and the impact on Central School or schools in general, right? And so that's a big component too, because whether it's a renovation or something else, the reality is, we need to consider that. So it's not just necessarily saying, yep, we can just clean it up, and it's going to look the exact same way. Then we're not, we're omitting a lot of factors here. And so no matter what the investment, we need to be really thoughtful and forward-thinking in the decisions that, you know, this group makes, because it's not just about putting up today, right?
The MSB, uh, MSBA, when we met and we listened to and, and had our time to thank them, we are one of 10 school districts in the Commonwealth that have been pushed forward. And I can't remember the last, I think, is it Jack McCarthy, John, from MSBS, Jack, I want to say McCarthy, but he, he came on at the beginning and he said, no matter how much money we have, we could not, in our lifetimes, probably get to every school district in the Commonwealth and change the buildings. That's how in need buildings are. And we also know that the need of our Central School is, is like so many others. And they're not even giving out the, any money for the SOIs, the accelerated repair programs, over the next few years, because they're finding that we're repairing buildings, but they need to be renovated or, I mean, fully renovated or fully rebuilt. As Kate just mentioned, as Gordon, you mentioned, to go out and to spend the money in a year from now on a feasibility study, to bring an engineering company in, to go out to tell us what they see, what they found out about East Bridgewater, is a fact-finding mission for Central School and the town. Once we take that into consideration and put it out on the floor, then we'll, we will hear, like you just said, the, the tax increase, what is it going to do to the town, what's it going to look like, how bad is this going to be? Look at what the high school, this high school, by far, and, and Dr. Williams would tell you the same thing. We have been to a lot of high schools that are, that are either the new projects paid for by MSBA or paid for by the towns. You drive in here, this is one of. You drive in here, this is one of the most beautiful aesthetic-looking facilities when you walk in, or when you drive, when you drive up that, and you see the front of this building, that's what it's like. And so when people say, yeah, that we spent a lot of money, yes, we did. And it's gorgeous, but it, it fits so many pieces of the puzzle. The next is Central School.
Excuse me, Liz, I'm so glad that you brought that up, because it would be my hope that whatever the decision ultimately is with the Central School, that the town also realizes, because so many of us are so recently in our memory that, yeah, this is a brand-new building. Well, it's not going to stay brand-new forever, but Central School used to be a brand-new building. And along the way, decisions were made not to spend money on what upgrades it needed, or, and I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just saying, reality is, these buildings will last a long time, but not easily and not inexpensively. And so I'd like to think we've put together a plan for this building, any of the buildings, to say, you know, when are we going to need a new roof? When are we going to need, how is our heating system holding up? AC, whatever it may be? Because if you just ignore it, someday, it's going to come knocking, and that's not going to be a pretty sight either. So I'm hoping that we learn from this whole process and say, yeah, here's what we're going to do at Central School, and oh, by the way, let's make sure we have an internal organization that keeps up with all of what's needed to keep these big, impressive, needing, needy buildings going, and get more than the expected lifespan out of them. That's good for everybody, so.
I think that that's one of the things that, I mean, when we went through the process, and they came here and walked the building and talked to us, that was one of the things that they kept saying, is that it's, it's got good bones, it's been up, you know, people have been in there. There's only so, I mean, it's like in our own homes. You have good bones, but you, I mean, at some point, something has to change.
Yep.
Copper piping to PVC, now you got pecs. I mean, it's just, everything is upgrading every year and all the time. We just want to get that on, I asked Kate to stay for a few minutes, because I wanted to get it out here this evening. I want the community has seen it up on the, our website, or has had us talk about it, but it has, nothing has been, and we sent the parent squared message, saying, we have been invited, we're one of 10 districts. That's a really great, great thing. It says that we are in good standing in the state, in good standing with MSB, that we have completed projects with MSBA, the roof, the boiler, and done some other projects, that they've been here, we have a new school. We haven't defaulted, we keep in contact. They ask us to send paperwork, we get it done. We commissioned this building. I mean, when Dr. Williams and I first arrived here, heard from Central School and me from out of town, we had to commission this building. We had, we, we were not on the team that built this building, and we had to commission it. So we learned a lot through that process at the end. Now we're learning a lot from the process at the beginning. Regardless of what the town wants to do, I want to leave this. Kate's first faculty meeting in September, I went over. We had gotten, we received a telephone call earlier in that day, and I went to see Kate. She was in a faculty meeting. I asked Kate if I could announce that the MSBA has invited us to talk to them and to be part of the program. This was September, just to even have the conversation where they came to look. Heard staff, our teachers, our staff stood up, cheered, jumped up and down, and started If you've never been over there, it's a very special place. It's very hot in the winter, and can get very cold. It's very hot in the fall and in the summer. The windows can't be opened. We need more ventilation, we, we know that. The kids are doing well over there, the teachers are fantastic. I'd like to give this a shot and see what we can do for that building and for the town.
I just want to circle back just to one thing, and I think it did come up, but just to make it clear...
Did you forget a room that...
I could give you a list. You know I could. I have a running list with my custodial staff, so you know I could do that. That wasn't my point. My point was going to be just circling back to some things that came up that I think were addressed. But if MSBA thought that we let our facility go and didn't maintain it over the years, even though, you know, maybe the standards of what some people might think it should be, they wouldn't, they wouldn't partner with us. And they made that perfectly clear, too. They talked about districts that think if you just let things go, and you take pictures of all these horrible things, that you'll get in faster. And it's quite the opposite, because if you don't show that you've been maintaining your buildings to the best of your ability over time, they aren't going to partner with you. Because they want to know commitment, they want to know that you've been invested through your town, through your facilities, and through your department companions within your town. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Doesn't mean that we know that we don't have issues, right, and things that are old and antiquated, because they are, but if we weren't maintaining them, even as unique as they might be, then MSBA would walk away.
Very good.
So I want to make sure that was clear.
I think if anything, it highlights, I mean, safety is what's the loudest thing on the table.
Sure.
Like, we're not just talking about something new or shiny, we're talking about basic human needs that are being met as best as possible, but could be met.
And the town has, the town loves that building. They may, I always say this, we've started saying this now, it's not the building that they're in love with, we love the building, we love Central School, it's the people that make the building. It's the people, and what it does, what it's there for, so.
I'm curious, too, you mentioned the modulars are at the 15 years right now, so that clock is ticking. And you think with the feasibility study, are they going to see more things that accelerate the clock inside of Central that maybe we weren't as aware of as we needed to be?
It's possible.
My other point was that I think Central Elementary School is a special place. And elementary schools, I think, attract people to a town that's growing, because it's young families that want to be here for the duration of their lives and raise their kids here, and I think it's an important thing to have a good school. So that's just my two cents on that. But I know when I moved here, I looked at crime and I looked at the schools, one and two. So I think others probably do the same, and I think having good schools is good for the town.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, I did have a question earlier, before I forget it. I know we've kind of moved grades, like the third went to Mitchell. If we, and this is probably way down the road, is there any chance of moving grades again to accommodate, if the, if the new Central comes in, or if it's renovated, it's bigger, and we can add a grade back, is there any thought on that? That could be a year from now question.
Yeah, I think the feasibility study, we need to get to that phase, and they might offer some suggestions about that. And then based on if we get to move along in this process, and we talk about what does a renovation or a build, or whatever those things look like, then when you start looking about that space and talking about that instructionally, that's when those doors kind of open up, those conversations develop. Right now, our focus is really pre-Ked, too, because that's what Central School is, so that's where we're starting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
I could have a list by a half hour from now.
All right. So last time we were here, thank you, Kate, last time we were here, we talked about, yeah, yeah. Last time that we were here, we talked about hockey jerseys, if you remember, and we had some donated jerseys from the coach of the hockey team.
Oh, yes, we, we were on the November 8th, we...
So we, we, athletic director had put forth, you know, let's wear these jerseys five times. The parents have reached out, along with the, with everybody else has reached out and said, you know, the kids really love these uniforms, they really want to wear these uniforms, can we have this discussion? Spoke with Principal Clements, and the athletic director, met with the parents, one of their members came forward, he was the representative of the parents, spoke to the coach. We, as a school, do not have any problems with it, the MIAA doesn't have any problems with it. Why I came to you and why we thought, because they were donated, so we have accepted them. Because they're donated, they belong to us, we're going to put them in, we, we're going to wear these jerseys, and then the other jerseys that we did buy last year, that we did buy out of our operational budget, we will put them in the box, and after, at the usage of these, when these are done, we'll bring out those again. So we won't buy hockey jerseys on the next round. One of the things that I am going to bring to you, though, is bringing out a new policy that, I love the fact that, that parents or someone would like to donate a jersey. Mr. Spigot from EBIA bought golf jerseys this year for the 50th anniversary, 50th? 50th anniversary for golf. Kids loved them, it was a great gesture, and it's really nice. And if that comes up again, that might be something that we, we allow. But when people buy jerseys for the team out of the goodness of their heart, when we pay to play, and parents are paying, and we, as a school district, are buying uniforms, and another uniform comes in, it's hard for me, because I'm one of these people saying, I don't want to pay to play anymore. I have been trying to cut that fee down since I started. I believe that kids should have the opportunity to play sports, to be in the band, to get on a bus, and not have their parents pay $350 for them to do so. And when we do that, it just, it sort of takes away, well, you know, we're going to buy hockey jerseys. Well, we just bought hockey jerseys. Well, we're going to buy this jersey, we just bought that jersey. When I tell you that the athletic director, the coach, and the students, athletes, whether it's, or the band, Mrs. MP, when they go to buy new uniforms, the kids are brought into the conversation, and they're allowed to look at the books, when the uniforms, when, when, when different types come in, the kids get to see them, they get to try them on, we look at them. They choose the uniform that they want. We help them, yes, these, this is the book, if we're, if we're Adidas, if we're Nike, if we're, who are we now?
Under Armour.
Under Armour, if we're Under Armour today, we look at the Under Armour book, we allow the kids to pick, and we go from that direction. I thank the community for wanting to do this, but when we're a pay-to-play school, we really need to think of what we're doing when we do that. There will always be the haves and the have-nots. The hockey parents have always been so supportive, because they had to, and they always supported that hockey team. We took that on a few years ago. So I, I spoke to the parents, the parents were elated, I think the kids are very, the kids are very excited, but I'll come back around with that later. I just want you to know that we are going to allow them to wear the uniforms, we've spoken to the MIAA, we will announce what, going into the playoffs, what we will be wearing, and that's all we have to do, so. I just wanted to let you know on that. The Mitchell School, I met with the music parents, I just want to let you know, I met with the parents last week, just to talk about scheduling and making sure that we are fulfilling our obligation to our students who like music and want to be part of the band and continue that, so that our band and our chorus grow, not only at the younger grades, but here at the high school. I met with a great bunch of people, we had some great conversation. Ms. MP has now went down and met with the Mitchell School principal today, so now they're in constant conversation about how she can help and have him, give him an understanding of the music, and what the department is, what the kids want to do, and moving forward. So tomorrow night, I'll be at the Central School at 6:30. For any parent, it doesn't just say, I just try in different schools at different times and different locations in the district. If people want to talk to me, or people want to bring something to my attention, or to the district's attention, not just me, but the district, because I represent that, please come to these meetings. If I don't know what's bothering you, I cannot help. If I don't know that there's an issue, I can't straighten it out. If I don't know that you're not being heard, then I can't listen to what you need and try to find a way to, a conduit to get you to be heard on the other end. So I will be there tomorrow at 6:30. But this was a good, I heard a lot of great things from the parents, and they also reached out, and it was very nice to meet with them. So I wanted to bring that up.
Can I ask one quick thing for Ron? So, and I, you had mentioned, like, a lot of this is around scheduling. We heard tonight from each of the buildings, scheduling is a sig...
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a significant issue, is correct, but something that was addressed. And so I think, like, this is obviously an opportunity, each of our principals has really great ideas to move forward, but I think the other thing to think about is also, like, aligning...
Yes.
...those efforts, too, and, you know, if we can be helpful, or, and ensure that, because I think meeting with these music parents is a great way that we're engaging involved community members, like, if we can help with that, too, please...
Sure.
Let us know, yeah.
I will. You know, we all meet with the principals, but Dr. Williams and I meet with them on a regular basis about various things. On Monday, we met with the principals, and this was it, this CPT is right up in front. We need to be able to have an administrator with our teachers more often than not. But we also are obligated to provide an unassigned block or teacher time for themselves.
And equitable experiences for students, yeah.
And equitable experience. And Dr. Williams will push back on my side, because she needs the times, she needs time for instruction in the classroom, and I'll push back and say, but I want the principals with their teachers, so that they can talk about how to go in this direction. So we are doing that, and the high school principal's working with the Mitchell School principal, Kate, we brought Kate up yesterday into the conversation. Her schedule's different, they do things differently. However, the support, and I think I brought that up, which brings me into the budget subcommittee conversations, they've begun. Dr. Williams will always, I push for more common planning time, but she's also going to push for more instructional time. So we, we've taken that into. I'm going to push John to be creative, so that we can find more support staff, or more staff, so that we can provide CPT and more instructional time. You can't have, it's hard to have it both ways when you have just what we have. That's what they're finding, is, is teachers want more time with students, but they also want more time to develop lessons with their, with their peers.
Liz, how does something like, in the past months, a couple months ago, we were talking about band and schedule, right? So how, in that, how does that fit into what you're saying? Is that considered instructional time?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes.
When you think about it in those two ways that you're talking about it, it's...
Yes, and, and...
...an instructional time schedule?
And we've been, you know, taking from Peter to pay Paul this whole time, and we've got to find an equitable system. I, I can't, I, Matt, Mr. Parkett, you know, coming from a high school level and looking into the, to a middle school, has opened the, has opened the doors for a lot of creativity, and because he, now he's, he's in love with the middle school, because it is fun, and there's just so much opportunity. He's starting to see that, and I, I believe he, he's come up with a great plan that can fit everything. And we also have a grant that we have, that we'll be able to provide another teacher there for career exploration, which will then be able to do what we're talking about.
And it sounds like, from this report also, we're also, because we have such unique grades at those schools, we're, we're also expanding kind of the pieces of feedback that we're getting, not from a typical middle school, but, you know, yeah, too, so.
And I think, you know, Lauren Foster brought up something tonight, you know, do we look at it at 3, 4, can we look at it at 5, 6? Can you look at it this way to that way and do different things? And Gina and I are talking about that, she's bringing it to the principals, the curriculum facilitators, the technology that she meets with, they're saying, this is what we see, this is what we'd like to see more of, and then we hear from the principals, there's just not enough time, or there's just not enough room to do everything we want to do. So we're trying to, we'll find that out, so. It's getting there. I'll give you a quick bus update. Today was the first day of the school year of the 2023, but 2023 school year, 2022, 23, that all buses at all schools were on time from high school to the Mitchell School, and were on time and early at the Central School. We are continuing to work with Lucini, we are continuing to work on some of the appeals that have still come through, we still have got a couple out there. We talked, I had a parent call me the other day, it's now on John Shea's desk, they're going back out there one more time to look. I mean, we're in January. It's, this is tough. I understand, everybody wants door-to-door, we can't do it. And they're still struggling to get drivers. I spoke to Bill Lucini yesterday, he said for every driver, for every, for every driver, for every new driver he puts in a bus, on the same day he puts a new driver in, somebody quits or resigns in any district, because he'll switch you, you know? We have a union here, so they'll, we have ours, but they'll, they'll switch drivers. So it's still, that's still killing us. We talked to them, they did, Gail did look at going down from 13 buses to 12 buses, we did look at that. It would mean, and we talked about that, mean moving routes, making kids walk more... walk more, doing this, doing that. I don't think parents want that, we didn't hear that, we're trying very hard to move in this direction, and we are working with Lucini. You pick up the phone, you call Bill, you call Will, you call Gail, they pick up the phone, they're not ignoring us, they hear us, we're not the only district that's going through this, so. But kudos that everybody was on time today. We started the budget meetings on last Friday with the town, the town administrator and the chair of FinComp, the finance committee, came down, met with school committee chair at Pennington, John Shade and myself, we started the conversation, we threw it out there, we started, we met tonight with our budget subcommittee on Friday, John and I will certify our first number that goes up to them, goes up to the town, and we'll go from there. Well, not, it's not certified, but we will certify it to go, but it's not certified. It'll be our first round. I was asked by a parent, and it came through not only from a parent to me, but through the school committee, that, about sports fees for co-op sports when we go other places. We have co-op with, I'm going to use girls hockey, we call it the web, and we pay for, we are hooked up with West Bridgewater, we split the ice cost, how much it costs to get on the ice for practice and for games, we split the transportation costs, and we split the coaching costs, and the athletic trainer cost.
Based on the number of kids.
Based on, so, but we're splitting that. So the question came across, why do we pay when we are with Brockton, we're up there for gymnastics? Why are we paying Brockton to co-op with them? Because those kids don't pay. Well, that district is a full 100% free and reduced school district, so free lunches, free busing, free everything. However, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas, Mike Thomas, still has to pay for transportation to send kids to meets, he still has to pay for the coach, he's still going to pay for gym time and equipment, you know, singlets and all those things. So we have to pay a portion of the cost for our child, our student, to go on to that team. And that's, that's that on the co-op. I think Mr. Clements forgot, so I'm going to, he is asking, are we going to allow out-of-state travel or international travel for Costa Rica or Spain, not for the following, for spring of 2024? I put it on your plate, I'm going to let him come and discuss it with you, but that's on your plate this evening, are we going to allow our kids out of the country? That's something that we will have to discuss. You have COVID restrictions still in some areas of the world, and we also have, unfortunately, at times, there's unrest in different areas of the world. I mean, wake up two nights ago, two days ago in Brazil, no one thought that it was going to be a coup, they never thought it was going to be overthrown, and we've got, you know, an issue. So that's something to put on your plate, he would like to know if we're going to go, if we'll let international travel go again.
Excuse me, Liz, to that, to that point, before we have this up for discussion at one of our next meetings, if you could distribute to us the current form that has to get filled out.
Yep. That was just to put it on your table, just to say, start thinking about it.
Because I think that, for me, starts to frame, okay, how diligently are we about checking this all out? And just to your point, one of the notes I just wrote down is, maybe we should even include a check-in with the State Department to say, hey, we're going to Costa Rica, what say ye?
Yeah.
We wouldn't go there, and excellent, great, I mean, I just want to cover all those bases to say, I'd love that the kids can go out of the, out of the country, great, but I think we have the responsibility to say, let's make sure they're going to be as safe as we can make them.
I think that Dr. Williams and I had a conversation last spring about going to DC. We have, you know, we'd like to send them to Washington DC. Well, January 6th, a year ago, right, we have an issue, do we want to send them to DC? I still want to send them to DC, I think it's very important, it's all free when you go through those museums, it's so important, because, I mean, yeah, we're paying for a bus, and the kids are going to pay to go overnight, and, but the history and the, what you learn when you walk through the Holocaust museum, and things like that, it's just, it's amazing, and.
Any of these trips, we would go through, like, a vendor, right? So they would also have, like, checks and that stuff, too, yeah.
No, what is that?
EFC. There we go. Education.
Yeah, grand classroom?
Grand, yeah.
Grand classroom, and that's who I think the DC is, the DC trip is, but that's something that, just to think about.
International, that's EF.
EF.
Okay, yeah, there.
I got the EF right.
So.
Super supportive.
Curious, have you heard of any other districts? Have you heard of any other districts approving international travel or talking about it?
I haven't, we haven't really talked about it, because it's been all about COVID, and it's been all about COVID, and it's been all about ransom attacks, ransomware attacks, cyber attacks, cybersecurity, it's all about COVID. So hopefully, we'll move on from there, and that's good. Just, and again, the ask, he's on time, he'll be uploading for, he said, within two weeks, it's supposed to be on February 1st, he's going through it right now, he has to do 34, he had to do 34 points, he was waiting for them to get back to him, because he's, like, the report that we had from the targeted review, same thing came from, he asked from him, and he wants to put a couple together, as he, as he said, you know, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can, we can talk about this at the next January meeting, the international travel?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, and I'll bring the forms.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gordon.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gordon.
You are up for MASC resolutions.
Great, I just wanted to wait my family's coming, they wanted to hear me present. But I won't hold you up for that. Essentially, the.
The wit, Gordon.
Essentially, the, I think there were six resolutions, they all ultimately passed with the footnote of a lot of discussion, and in some cases, they were amended, but the background is that, as you can imagine, school committees, school districts, whatever, very important for the Commonwealth, for anybody, and so we have an organization, MASC, MAS, that have a liaison and talk with our legislatures, and say, hey, we're talking to all these people who represent all of these school districts, and these are the concerns we have. It's not binding, but it gives that, that branch of MASC something to go on, say, we're speaking on behalf of all of these people represented in our, in our state, and so when they sit with, you know, people in the political arena, they have some substance to it, and there's some background, it's well thought out, people who focus on this stuff spend unbelievable amount of time on it, and it's impressive when you're part of that discussion, you hear all the different things that come up, but. So the bottom line is, everything was passed, I couldn't write fast enough to write all the different amendments and the different conversations, but they were legitimate, they were concerns that ultimately everyone voted on, and so that's what they'll go forward with, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon.
I'll have my family watch it on video.
Record.
I was expecting that to be longer, Gordon.
Well, I would have, but you cut me down so quickly last time.
Appreciate your diligence.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to last long enough to give you this report, so.
Thank you, Gordon.
You're welcome.
Were you here for public comment?
No, I'm just here for the meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
At this time, I would take a motion to accept the educational mini-grant donation from Cape Cod Five Foundation to the Gordon W. Mitchell School in the amount of $404. The funds are intended to be used for Allison Canoyer's project coffee cart. The funds will be deposited to the MS miscellaneous donations for supplies account, 26330-867-4860. So moved. Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Action is required to accept, I accept promotion, or I'll take a motion to accept the donation of $500 to, from RBC Capital Markets to the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. So moved. Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2022, regular school committee meeting. So moved. Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant, 27SV dated December 28th, '22, and 29SV dated January 11th of '23. So moved. Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant, 26PS dated 12/21/22, and 28PS dated 1/4/23. So moved. Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor? Aye. Gordon, you going to vote?
I was just trying to get, trying to cross reference, oh, it's 26 PSI, okay, that's what I, the one I have, I didn't see 28, but I'm sure it's here. Oh, I got it, okay. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, so it's unanimous. And, does anybody have anything else?
I have one quick thing, we are Diversity Equity and Inclusion Summit next week for the MS, our administrators are going. If any of you would like to go, I have, we have a couple extra spots, if, you know, most of you work.
When is it, where is it?
It's on the January 20th, it's up in Worcester. All of our, the high school, all the principals are going, and we have been in support of, been going to these PDs, but if you'd like to go, please let me know, because Kelly will be registering us tomorrow.
Okay.
It's just something to go to, so you hear what we're doing, and principals, their association, that's the administrative association, I think it's important for them to support their associations, but also to be around other principals who are hearing and seeing the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for that offer.
I'll check if my calendar is clear.
I'm going to be traveling, but be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? No? Thank you, everyone, and thank you for actually coming to our meeting, we appreciate having someone in the audience.
You're welcome.
At this time, I take a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved. By Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for coming back.
Thank you, everyone.[1751.63]